Let's see if you have a second.
Oh, do good, do good.
Do good. Oh, don't forget to tell her, oh, I'm trying to get in church with the lady. The people that came to this here meeting. I really like it.
I hear everybody.
I really like to get in church with you. You know who I'm talking about.
Tammy or Sylvia?
Miss Jack, what was her name? This, the lady with the blonde hair. Only commit, only the Smiths.
Oh, I don't know.
No, no. Trying to see what they're saying now. Anyway.
Yeah, good man. On these sheets that were given out. Were they upcoming schedule?
Yeah, start on the 10th.
I'm not reading it wrong, but I think this one states or not. With, from the day of September's.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I want to plug people check now at this time.
God and Tammy, I belong to the school.
You don't. First fall of March. Yes. The first year starts on.
Happy in my little Tucson.
My, which, which could box.
Box, okay.
Okay, we'll be.
Can I say that?
Yeah.
We're gonna make a name for it.
It's.
But I won't get it.
School is better, okay. Are we asking this one or two? Okay. Yeah. I'm serious, and not like we used to be, not with this booth.
Yeah.
That's right. The part, the one is just open to the right side of the wall. So, yeah.
Now, good.
Yeah. You can't, it's hard to see because they're nearby.
Did we get so cold in there? Oh, we always so cold. I may so tired of anything, go through the job there. I don't miss so good. I've been missing stuff. I can't try to get my baby there for school there. I stay go down, go to that. If you go with that, I can. They're waiting coming before the top. I'm moving to that one thing. I'm thinking about.
Sure, it all started. I would start. All right. I mean, well, just to meet that one with them.
But I think she did it all.
Absolutely, that much. Well, I'll tell you what, I think. We, we, that may be a terrible office, because we, we took that property.
Oh, I made research on that one. I couldn't find the authorities. I went to.
There's, I'm very, we made the decision, but I have to ask the.
Well, I actually, I'm a researcher. You told me, I'm a leader.
Here's sweetheart.
Can you bring back the, you know, what I wrote some of that here? It will start six months of the actual six present projects.
Oh, yeah, I can tell you. I got this. I want the best of it. I want everybody to be good. What you hear, um, right now. Yeah, yeah, I think I'm going to go where I plan. I got. I mean, I will, I mean, I do all the say yes to this too. I could sign. And they kept telling me. Um, they said. That was a really, what is it?
To give that another question.
For the past half of the year, I don't know what you're. You know, Mr. Stewart writes the column about veterans, the paper, or does he just send that email? Oh, okay. He did the story. Maybe he actually speaks there for the family. You know, I told you. Did a good research and found that. I think this would be the awesome.
I'm a camera, that's a part, I was at birthday. And I'm.
A little. That's one of our children.
Please don't deal with the whole.
Yeah, bro.
Say for you.
That's so nice.
I feel you.
Yeah. But then I was on. Oh, my gosh. Yeah, we gotta get my head.
Good morning, morning.
I don't know. I gotta go last way to talk to my coach when you're.
We gotta go to that. We gotta go to that. Don't be no air.
We were.
Nobody's speaking.
She like that.
It, it's the. It's. I still forgot the last one yesterday. I appreciate. Jonathan Kirk.
Yeah.
Hey, there's. Don't. One, two, three. Oh, that's not you. Yeah. 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 I don't know. I thought. Well, I don't. I don't like that. All the. Uh, like, so. That's. So. That's all. I got my. I don't need. I'm not even. I don't. You do, you do it all right, don't play. I don't want.
Yeah. So, if you ask me.
Did you check? You check again.
Yeah, he called.
Again.
Okay, okay.
Did you get? Thank you.
He said, we want to. And that remains the one that we need to do that something where I'm under that corner. I know people were not.
Hi.
Is this. If you. They say. Maybe. So, like I said. Well, when you get that, you actually let the story. You must. Don't spread. I mean, I was just. It's just. I'm. But he did say on that deed that the one that's there. He could place a piece of like $500 for that. But I want to bring that whole field. It has to be jacked up and loaded. Or be here for jacking up. And be free to be here. Oh, my goodness. I'll. Exactly. I have to tell you very much, I want to share that with them. Hello. I get. We got it. And. I. Pretty. I want to tell you. I know. I'm. Well, I hope that I bring back.
I'm with it.
I got.
Yeah.
No, I just got the. Forty, forty, I don't know. I'm gonna say. I don't. About. All right. Okay. So. Um, who did that? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
That is a, that's a lot.
Hmm. No.
The, the, the.
Well, I saw. Yeah. Why?
All right.
So, let me ask you. It's with me. But we can, that's why I think we could all have seen that. Don't ask. I think a lot. And that's. When I.
So, so we can.
And I look for. I did a lot of things. And he tells me that she doesn't. So, I'm glad to do. They got a miracle. I did see. I see.
So, there.
So, I know what I'm. Oh.
Order. Oh. That's. So.
I live right on that. I mean, I'm. I'm sad to that. I have because. For the. I can't. Okay, I'm. Can I wait on one of those? Of. Some days. That you move. Also.
And I hold them.
Oh.
Yeah. Good morning. Good evening. This work session of Selma City Council is hereby called order. At this time, let us all bow. Dear the Father. We come to you this afternoon to give you thanks. Give you thanks to God for giving us grace and mercy. God in heaven, we are so grateful. That you allow us to be, this afternoon, to try to work on solutions to issues facing our people. God, this evening, we ask for your direction and for your guidance. Allow our discussions, discussions, to be fruitful with God and allow something positive to come about our family. God, we pray for all of our citizens. We pray to God that you take care, provide safety for all of our beloved people of Selma. We pray for our state as well as our nation. Now, God in heaven, we pray this evening to God that you allow everything when we return to be found in our homes. For God, that we have these mother vessels in your precious hands, let your children love us. Let us stand with that belief. I pray that this is the life of United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in your visible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And this time, we have all call, uh, council members, President. Our President Joe. Our. Hartwell. Councilwoman Greta Thomas. All right, Councilwoman Clay Robert. Councilwoman Jerry. Councilwoman Sarah Lindau. Councilwoman Erica Jefferson. There are Councilwoman Jane Thomas, Craig, and Councilwoman Michael Johnson. All right, thank you, Council, for your responses to our role for the evening. We'll move right on to, uh, our items on our agenda for citizens' requests. According to our agenda, we don't have any citizens. All our citizens request to make it so. We'll move on to our next item, which are announcements to the council. And I have a couple of announcements that I'm gonna ask everyone else for their announcements at the end of it. Uh, first, let's remember this, uh, let's remember our work as Ivy Eaters. Uh, she lost, she lost her father, uh, so let's keep her in. Uh, we know this is something that all of us have to deal with it there. And so, please, uh, offer your prayers and support for our work during your time and our families' time of need. All right, let us remember other announcements, uh, that we have going on in the city. This Saturday, August the sixth, at 10 a.m., we have our hat ball. So, remember, uh, that the Beverly's Wall is taking place this Saturday, 10 a.m. Uh, at, uh, James Murphy's Park at the bridge. They start there, we walk the bridge. At 10 a.m., so please, if you can, try to make, uh, this activity. Uh, we have a lot of activities going on this weekend related to the 57th, uh, celebration of the Garderoy Rescue Act. Uh, there are several entities in our state that are throwing, uh, different events. Uh, I know the Center for Truth, uh, is, they're having something. I know Destroying Land is having a debate. Also, one that is stored at that church is having a debate. So, if you want to go for more information about, uh, the celebration, please contact any of those entities. As we will be celebrating, uh, the National Rescue Act, uh, this weekend. Uh, let us also, um, remember that the AIL, Algonquin District Economic Development Academy, will be here in this session in Selma next week. Uh, will be held on August the 11th, starting at 9:30 a.m. at Wells Community College. So, I know that several of us are part of that academy. So, we're asking, uh, everybody, if you're part of, to try to be, uh, as we be this upcoming week. Uh, I received a notice from KFC Selma. We know that's a big huge event that takes place in our state. Uh, we inform you that this year, the COVID number, versus COVID, uh, they're not going to have anything in person, uh, this year. So, they're gonna move into 2023. So, that's usually the onset of, uh, beginning of Selma. So, please keep that in mind if they have sent us, uh, notifications regarding that. Uh, those are all the announcements that I have. Councilmen, if you have the announcements you want to share, we'll start with Councilwoman Jane, then I'll start with Councilwoman Thomas.
I was gonna say one. On. Obviously, that is a whole lot. We have a meeting. So, it's. After, we come out and have conversations with the governor. It will be a whole lot, uh, in cafeteria, so. Oh, wow. On. Also, um. On last week, I had an opportunity to take my, you could ask me to. I don't know. Yeah, that's exactly what I. And we had a good time. We discussed a lot of things. Thing, process of having a, a treatment. Why not just, y'all want to stay up, know each other? So, I personally asked you both of this contest. But, uh, I'm proud to say that he has started. I want to study. Some of those have volunteered to be my chapter. Well, as soon as we find a whole passion, will we take one night out and have 21 young people, the rest will be a lot. But I'm tired.
No rest. Councilwoman Greta Thomas.
Good afternoon. I like to make announcement. I know, Mr. Stewart. First, they know you did make the announcement by, uh, this September month, uh, the 8th. We had to ask the, you know, that's, that's, that's what come, our representative. Uh, they start from one eleven. They decided to say, the last of the life, one part. Uh, that's how we, that's how we come to represent our city to a part of the city. And some of us, I know a lot of y'all have been, uh, working. But, uh, we'll be here one very, very. Resting. Here was the birthday on, how, what she given to us. On, uh. And then my next announcement is that, I know our president is the, he's a chairperson of our public, I mean, for public safety. Uh, we would, uh, still have a maybe a top chief that we want having our national night. Which national night, I was, it's, it's on the staff at the office, but chief was in his, uh, conference. So, he said he wanted to have it on the bill. Which all other cities have been having a national night out, but we bring, it's climate protection, where we bring our family together, uh, out to the event where we have food. And also, we would have all our first responders there and other people talking about, uh, of the safety. Uh, it'll be, uh, at 6 o'clock at the clock hard tomorrow. And I hope that all of us in the city of Selma will attend because, uh, I watch, uh, my daughter, we have a good, uh, we have a nice national night out. Where the people in their city came out and families and stuff. So, I hope that the city of Selma, this is something that we want to connect in our community, cause public safety is a number one issue. And, uh, we are part of the, uh, Public Safety Committee, uh, and the council people who do know, uh, this could be successful. So, we are inviting this to the venue. The citizens of Selma will come out tomorrow, like all of us. All, my next announcement is to, uh, I wanna say this because it's, it's very important, I say this. And I really want to take public word. I want to thank you because you heard our voices in our world. You heard that we needed it cleaned up. We had began to get back, we found in our, in our world, we begin to have the kind shots. And, um, I want to say to the director, this is what we want to achieve by making a group. What's happening was looking bad. We had begin to have the problems and the issues in our main, which we do not want. And the citizens of what's there on the factory, on the west side, because it was much needed. And now we can see. Uh, people can see each other and we can see what's going on in our world. And I hope that people change, we really do appreciate it. But we still got some issues. We still got some public safety issues. And I want to say this because of our chief has been here with us to address, or to hear as a representative of, of the city. We got some serious things that going on. We got some serious things that is beginning to come back. And this is why their attorney general had to ask us to set up, or we have someone to work with in our community. Bottom is not what is wanted. We have had a baby wash shop yesterday, 2:00 in the daytime. We had a shootout. People were out on the porch. Kids were out playing basketball. We want public safety. We want more control in our neighborhood. And, you know, they asked us for all these things. They said it was gonna get there. The off the road, the mafia, the. And we need it. That's what Mr. Medley was doing for us. He was coming out of my community, hearing the voices of the people in our neighborhood. And we need somebody to come work with us in our neighborhood, because the people were, the people were kind of relaxed. But now, about 2:00 in the daytime, the kids didn't know where to go. They didn't know what to do. So, I'm asking you, I know the chief officer, the body of the council, he has not been here. He has asked for all of these things. He said that they was gonna get them on the grounds and give them label, they were gonna buy ice. And I would like for him to, uh, what the other thing was, please to talk to. Cause we are looking for public safety. We do not need another murder. We do not need another murder over in our neighborhood. So, we are asking for more people on the ground. We are asking for, for black and whites, they hit though, that brown people, they're making, that people see you. Because if we don't, we don't want another innocent person here. And then we trying to get there. So, I would like for. They asked me. And I'm, I'm telling everybody, I see them. Could we have? Mr. Ned back out in our neighborhood, talking to me. Looking out for me. Cause right now, we do need, we need. Because for the last three weeks, Friday night, we had a whole guy shot of 12 miles. One of our babies that I did deal with. There's a lot on the ground. 12 miles. Three were back in three. I'm just, you know, y'all just want to share. What, what it affect to you when you got, when you trying to do something, maybe? And we should have these gun screens, shooting up the house. We need more public safety control. We need some pretty big. Cause it seems like they don't, they don't care. We have kids out playing their best in the front yard, basketball, photographing, so we just want more of them.
Uh, maybe other announcements. Your councilman, Chris Thomas.
Okay. Um, to be more than just a line. I just want to, um. Talk a little bit about the $15 million that the waterworks received. Uh, just to clarify some things. I know a lot of people are saying that we're gonna be replacing water mains, water lines, and that's, um. Some of that information is not true. So, I want to read this, just so you have a correct information. On, on November 15th, 2021, President Biden signed this, and he swore by President, and he showed the law. A part of this law addresses same drinking water. This law elevates $18 billion nationwide in drinking water, uh, second order. Um, which is commonly referred to as SRL. Um, which is commonly referred to as S R L, S R L, or the lead service line replacement. Most specifically, the primary code of lead service line replacement is for economically disadvantaged communities. And Alabama, the Alabama Department of Environmental Ecology, which is A M, awards and distributes these S R L. The sale of waterworks has been awarded approximately $15.1 million. Uh, this project will replace, that was previously identified as a lead service line throughout the city of Salem. Which is primarily in the older neighborhoods and the downtown area. So lead service pipe, I want to clarify that, lead service pipes, uh, to be replaced with like steam from the water main located in the street. So the water meter, and then continue from the water meter to the residence, uh, or building. Approximately 69,000 feet of, um, 3/4 inch copper PVC will be required. 6-inch header pipe will be divariously looking, oh, uh, more on raw street. The project will take two years to complete, uh, once the construction begins, which is anticipated for later this year. A public meeting to inform citizens of Salem, um, about this project will be held August 18th, 2022. At the George Evans Building, and then if you have any additional questions about this project, I just want to clarify some information.
Thank you very, very much. Uh, and it's really good to hear information coming from the authorities. So thank you for your service.
And I, that, that, as you said, I do want to report, right now, there are four projects on, um, in the city of.
Thanks, good, thank. Councilman, you are like me, repeating today, um, what is this?
Uh, October 18th, at 16:00 PM, at the George Evans Building. So I hope everybody can understand the, 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 the better, because I was getting a lot of, um, feedback saying that we were playing the one, and that's not true, okay?
So that's, that's the little role for us. And for, good, uh, turn, five, six.
I'm sorry, five, I can't see, five, five, yeah.
Thank you for that.
And I have to say, break up, you're bad.
Thank you for that, I mean, that's really important information. Uh, and give your announcements.
We were talking about, maybe, some of them, this is something that happened the first time. A lot of, of, our shops, shops, restaurant specials, everything, they have to think that very first time. Um, from the tip into about eight, some, I've been earlier, it's like, later, and, um, just. But, but, I mean, there's about six or seven other ones, a vision about going on, so I don't think anybody can ever say that it's not a good decision. And so there's a lot of roles.
Alright, and then, um, just also, I guess, something to, that's finally, um, want to thank Councilman Carl, who had a successful working this past weekend. There, uh, appreciate it.
Thank you, all, thank you, Phil.
Yes, yes.
We have a good crowd.
Great, 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 great job. And also, let's keep in mind, it's back school time. Uh, county, the back school today, our county school system, they started back today, and on Monday, city schools, um, will return. On this Monday, and I think the 12, I think, uh, met with your Christian and more than that. So we do back to school time. So let's keep all of our, you know, people, get positive thoughts. Uh, I hope that they can go back there and, and, and after this summer, able to learn. Also, keep all of our teachers and staff, because they have a lot to deal with, uh, right now. So let's keep all of them in positive thoughts, uh, as we start our school system, uh, school time, here in Seattle now. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, follow now, to Mayor's Board, uh, we roll three items on the Mayor's Board. And of course, as, you know, if you have questions, you can ask those questions on Tuesday, uh, if you want, they can answer those questions tonight. Uh, I know one of the items on the board, the last item, kind of goes forward to overlap with the attorney report. So if you have a question for the attorney, they can back, you'll be able to press the end. That's concerning, with one time, rucksong made it to entirely, but I am not going to read, because I think Black Bear knows how to read. But you can see those two items on the board, if you have those questions, bring those questions on Tuesday, we have the, uh, the meeting actually taken down by eight. I was going to say whole board, but they, uh, our board. So, uh, let's remember that. Alright, now, let's go to the attorney report, at this time, uh, turning back, and I think you have all seven items, uh, that are on.
Alright, I have the, one official, and, and the national average, part of my, uh, torts office, they, uh, link it out. That's, that's seven items, I saw it, it's okay with you, uh, I would like to sit, just because I have more room, and it's important to you to manage, sign my all this paper.
Yes.
I have number one, this, this, or 25, 20.
I can hear you.
Yeah. Or 25, 21, that's 22, uh, funding, comparing long-term, long-term, that's, this is following the, 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 that, 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 that. This is the item, uh, is. Product of. These, Alabama Association, you know, Alabama State Employees Association, and Alabama Public Employees Agency. Requested that, maybe one time, entirety, long-term, almost explicitly, you had, and it was, which provided approximately 96 pounds of the water that is paid in our, in the 40 tax. Yeah, and to award one time, long-term, to their retirees. The resolution addresses the Act sheet that finds out that, I guess, the main cause, fund this bonus of a certain step on the retirees, would be $115,000, $115,000, $24,000. And according to that, it's the form, the act makes, the amount of the bonus is $2,000 per month, or $24,000 per year. Thus, by, by the years, the federal service, uh, and that, I mean, they, they eligible retired, he was eligible to retire, uh. We, there is a retired, will, we, 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 we ran, to, to grant the bonus to the several, to the office, that are residents of the R S A. Prior September 1, 2022, that's prior to the time of this, so whatever, bringing the residents to the county. The cost of one of the bonus can be paid either on some, or added to the one we ready to pay tomorrow, as able to one year period. The bonus will be distributed to eligible retirees, and that, yes, I think, for, for, prior to March 1, 2022. That's the payment was began on October 18th. The above request of bonus, funded with a one-time, and all, I have determined to remove this sound. He added, the one we ready to pay tomorrow, as able to one year period, from funding source, uh, along different pay by the tariffs, but, but the cost to bear one like that now, once it goes like that, once it goes. It's a total consideration.
Okay, uh, wait, how come, Thomas?
I want to ask you a question, I get, uh, instead of, we had, um, uh, bond, not due. So let me ask you this, is, of all the years that other employees have been working here. And, uh, this year, with this resolution. Will this bond issue affect other employees in the bottom of the town of the city, or will it effectively be doing this?
All those for retirees who retire, for about one, or 20 minutes or hours.
Oh, okay, and that's, that's the reason why I'm asking you, the reason why I'm asking you this is. Have, we did, uh, uh, looked at the, the research on this, uh, I know you just given us this, I'm saying that, uh. By what she did is. How did this, uh, come about, the, the, just what the boys, back month, that's going to retire, between two?
Well, it was, uh, uh, the brainchild of a group incident, first paragraph, second paragraph. The Alabama Retired State Employees Association, and the judge, for the Alabama Public Employees Agency. They're the ones who fashioned legislation, and sponsored it, I would imagine, now. That's latest sponsors of sale, but they want to push this, as they say, to approve. It's a retrospective look to deal with eligible retirees, or anyone who does, who retired before March 1st of this year, anyone who's eligible to retire already. They're not going to do this going forward, but it's called a longevity bonus, basically to deal with people. What requires me is that retiring now, or retired.
It's not that we have somebody coming up now, we have some people that, that work.
They would have had to retire before March 1st, 2022.
And that's what I'm saying, they do have, I do know, if you do have something, will be retired. So that would make them follow that category, if, if.
I would have to do a little bit more, you built this on, the word, the phrase eligible retiree, retirees, but it's mainly, uh. For any employee who run the system, who retire before March 1st, 2022, who is, who needs to qualify basis, of eligibility. And again, I'm, that, that, their words, their words, lots, I have to come back and refer to the stats, or, or ask someone at those leagues, one of those two.
I'm just wanting to get this, you don't understand, wow, but, okay, we do a question.
Our, really, how, uh?
Uh, I'm not, I'm in, 1.10, 2102, longevity pay for retirees. As a funding source in our budget, almost, for, and so I think we need to see that documentation, or, or Tuesday. That will be, that will be, that will be one, I want to see that, and there most come out of the, I understand, but everybody, everybody. Number, what I got, about, that, that, I remember.
Well, the question, where they used to set up, that question will be, so the part is here on Tuesday. So just put that out there, that this will be our part to take down, our question, there was. Alright, so, okay, um, and then I guess, maybe Attorney, you can ask this, is there a, any concern that we are wrong this time? It's like I've received something in some way, that, we have to do something for us, alright, that's what I'm, alright, so maybe exactly, then, 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 alright. I'll totally, but the council will have voted this resolution by September 1, in order for our retirees to get this bill, they can be considered, yes. Alright, so anyway, uh, you can research this more now, if you want, feel free, uh, item number two.
Item number two is, she referenced, R. R 237, that, to approve virtual government on body meetings, and, uh, to space that, and to include the thousand, or thousand, or even first.
Whereas six seven is one hundred and sixty five hundred and sixty six. So possible, this panel meets and sit down for these, what's this regular statistics? What's this regular statement, as a call me. Whereas the state that states has passed legislation, amended the old meeting act. Uh, this is founded thirty six, uh, says thirty six, that's twenty five days by our part one. Over the seventy five, which prefers to go to the lives, be by the time means. Whereas section thirty six, that's twenty five A, says five point two, says to the forty dollar. Ninety seven five, five day sentence, a meeting to hold the governor's by members of the vote. As maybe not hold hand and take more digits to update existing whole length, current style. And whereas, in light of the role of the connected revenue, section thirty six, that's twenty five days, five point two, four dollars. This is thousands of like a lot of just a meeting on the program line, I mean, telephone power, video cameras out of the summer. We're making it good that allows all just appear one another at the same time. Provided that over time of field much, so that the four elements, the government line, all physically present at physical location. That's why I thought that could be of that act. In a minute, Mr. Trump. Uh, this, in the interest of time, alright, we can skip it. Right, unless they have questions right now. Um, because, um, everyone should at that, I, I, I mean, that, everybody. Yeah, it's, I, I saw that you did, but I guess that's what you, but it was very.
So, so, uh, I guess what we're doing is laying the framework to be able to do. Some rules, enable call meetings.
Yeah. Well, the way we have to, we still have to have five members present. So you gotta have five members, five members present here in the town. And then, say, if somebody can't make it other than that five, they can join us down soon, and they can actually get the floor. Right now, they can't do it. And so, so adopting this resolution will allow us to have, still have to have five, fifty present. But when our other members can't be here due to illness, uh, they can't be here with this.
And whether or not I'm getting, getting right now, definitely. Or whether it's just the, it's all, any, the train is basically saying, if you're gonna get here, you're gonna get here. Uh, the other thing is that it's a portal of this body, and it's at right now. Of the body is three people, that's three, five people that are able to have this system.
By comparison, this would have counted commission. They would have had three persons, right? Because they are not identified, so long as you have your four persons, you're on duty. I saw that, I mean, this time it's been, it's my name.
Yeah, my question is, um, if this is chat on Tuesday, um, when does it take the day?
Uh, here's everything. Why, is, I think, very bad for children.
Forty five days.
Sorry, I have a question. I have a question.
Just give it.
The reason I asked the question, I think that needs to make who they did the request.
It's included in the policy practice. Yeah, it included the, the policy intent was or. You to be, to judge the policy, the policy states. That, 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 right.
Right.
Uh, and I can add.
Please, thank you.
Okay, you have questions, but I guess, I'm sorry, to go back to the, uh, so. First. Actually, some more. But I did find the proposed budget, that was nine nine one zero, about, one zero zero, not all that. It's only a pleasure, I just want. Do the fact, I'm telling you this. Uh, and, and we don't have any, uh, anything budget is saying that we didn't have any budget this year, nor would we have anything. It would take a lot of, 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 like this. So let me get this straight, if the proposed budget we have now, is in there or is not?
It is not in there, and it's also not here, the twenty twenty four budget actual. But this, there's nothing in that, that's covered, this year's budget.
It's a lot of items, it's, it's just no funds.
There's no funding in the, thank you, Councilor. There, the law that exists.
Yes.
Current, but there's no money in the law. So that, like you said, Councilor, is what requires doing the budget process to approve that, because it hasn't been moved in yet. Alright, so let's thank you for that clarification. Okay, back to item number two, any questions? Alright, let's move on to item number three.
And item number three is our president, our forty eight. That they can answer questions all along, three. Parrot justice and need a payment, uh, this is all shows, this is based on, uh, presence of all the problems that's here. Uh, let's see, it's, uh, and, uh, twelve hours. Uh, one of the, I think, someone of the council. He is to, is to. To. They to call, demolish, struggle to demolish, clear the property service. He's found, I was talking with, uh. This is a combination of, 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 the issue with providing that exact amount. Is that the amount charged to demolish, load up, and clear and. Clear the property, whether that is to play, is based on number, numbers of loads of truck loads going to. Enter, as Dr. Ben is demanding, that range that I've seen is between four hundred to two thousand and nine hundred and five hundred dollars. That's an average amount, uh, presented with some that he's still, I think, in the process. And that would be exactly, I can use two thousand and nine hundred and dollars, it is from the number of loads, once the house has been out, that are actually taken away. So they're, they're basically, and it varies a lot, depending on, whatever else you have to do, to take it out. Then demolish. They don't know which way. So I don't have an individual figure for each property. They have a lot of maybe it's property, to be that. This, we're out of, Councilor, I'm talking, if I think this is a clarification, uh, that was one. Question we had was, was, uh, because, because that as well, the procedure, how was that we needed the false property. I assess to, to present that cost to the council, for, that's part of the procedure. And one of the, the bigger thing, uh, that I would be worried was what properties does that number include the whole property? We don't have necessarily the last week's one, but if that, if that, uh, number that we had, um, uh, that, that last day, it was, uh. Fifty thousand hour or whatever, well, properties did that information, I think. Respecture, and I don't have, I think I couldn't get it, so, uh, you can include that request going to the fair. I'll make sure that he understands, so.
My question would be, how much they got on the, um, the location. Uh, statues, are they paying for them to the, the, the property, are they paying for this?
Is it, you mean, is the property on?
Yeah, yes, well, you have.
There, there are two ways this gets paid. Number one is some people call us and say, I want my property, they pay before we allow. Or after we give them that, that's paid amount. Number two is where property owners do not pay a lien against assets against their property. So they can't, they pay when, when they try to sell the property. Uh, number three, uh, the homeowner can hire a private contractor to, to. The mountains, or all the remains, if they take whatever they try to work out, we can't start again.
The reason why I ask you, with some of these property that you got on, we got it, still they in one set, they are not in one set.
Can you, you might send me a notice for which ones?
Uh, I'm looking at them, that's.
I understand what I'm saying, if you turn this one on, I'll pay back that to you.
Okay, because, uh, uh, the one you got at twelve oh eight Lapsley, twelve oh eight Lapsley. Twelve oh eight Lapsley is going back on for this year. But twelve oh eight, you, you see it, uh, from that street, the, the house, the address is, um, I'm running, I'm running all the way down.
A little bit, three dollars, no, yes, yes.
That's what's, but the reason why, that, my only question is.
Is that coming back?
No, the reason why I ask you, you got them on here for the, the box, and some of the ones on here, I know that they're not to some people. Let my asking, are they paying for the, the lot, she's possibly, or the city just won't be.
We, once the property of approval of demolition, we just, we allow that. People don't always pay that, they're assessed as liens against their property if they don't pay demolition costs.
Uh, law, Councilor James, and Councilor.
Okay, I know I've been on, before I've, you know, I've moved to South Silver House. And I'm wondering why the town, me wanting to have another city. Uh, I had chief, previous chief of, uh, property department, they don't talk about my house that I have to see where it is. I haven't seen my house like that in years.
Uh, I'm gonna say, is your house or houses?
Uh, it's houses, but I would, I would need to do the money. They can do that.
Anything and any of, or such, you all, you're asking, a house.
Ask that first house, I said, I said, all the ones out there, the previous, uh, five two, when I came back, he said, it was changed with greatly. Mowed, I had heard everything about, the house is in bad shape, it was, it has, it has kids, it was smooth, they broke the house. Tea, and he was still, tea on the house, and he spilled his tea, and it falls down.
Do you have that address?
Um.
Or do you know who has that address?
No, but it's on the top of St. Paul.
I'm sorry.
First, that, one of them, St. Paul is that first. Red Cross and First Amendment, on side. It's a hot, it's a hot.
And I'm afraid also, with that particular piece of property, that someone could pay us that, and follow. Because it looks like the structure is not stable. It's not a stabilized structure. And so I think that's something we definitely need to, I gotta take it, I gotta, with that, these properties.
Um, I guess my question, I just want to clarify a few. You mentioned that property owner. Can request that the city of sale demolition their property. I said, I believe that if I did, I, I, when I said that there's two ways for the assessment of the demolition. And when demolition takes place, someone can ask the city to demolish property, they have to pay, have it prior to the demolition. Uh, or they need a private contract to demolish the property, as an action between the citizen and the, and the property. Okay, if they, if you demolish the property, and there's no payment, then there's a lien to that, that property. Okay, how do you, 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 you're a business, okay. Here, here's the way, I'm at, it works. It's a structured code enforcement, fire department, code enforcement, however, so, they named property. And fix it, whatever the right terminology is, it needs to be demolished. We know that a homeowner, the property owner, not necessarily home, that it needs to be demolished. When you give the timeframe to demolish the property, and if it's not, we go in and demolish it and put a tax on the property. Well, that's essentially what we do through the council, okay, I'm just saying that an individual may, if he chooses before we demolish the property. Get it demolished, and then they'll, right? Or the city doesn't need to be doing, well, that, that, that's, we don't need to be demolishing.
So the thing that this session here is. Who is starting this process? Because where Councilor Harvey was just pointing out was that we shouldn't be in business if somebody comes to us and asks us to tear down the property. And then pay us, if you know what you're doing, we should do it.
That is, that's what we try. The property that we have in place, that's shady, to be clarified.
And that's what I was going on that, I work, I know, keep, keep, that's probably, go ahead, Councilor.
Cover that, 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 have, have ordinance, so it can. So we, we have to create a service for that, the council responsible, the council board. Services of the city are responsible, the county council, and we have to have an ordinance that says, we're going, we're like, we're not used. As a business-like service, we're buying, for the city, so, and we're gonna go tear down houses, and all that has to be ordered. So maybe, if we're, so, so, my, my, I'm sure, so, the two houses don't work through out here, probably the same group. Uh, they've already done through this whole process, because, because I actually lived it, having been torn down in my destruction, it was. But, so, so I, I actually already moved through this process, and I'm wondering if I'm working, I don't know if you get it, through this process.
Alright, we got a lot going on, same time here, and I'm trying to, I make sure that I was outside, if I may just, um. Any questions about, especially about, that, 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 you get about, or whatever we, that. Okay, I want to, I want, what I think you gave a lot to us this time is our local ordinance. We need to see the local ordinance. Which shows us that we have this authority to tear down houses. If somebody makes a request, because I have a city, but I still am moving something. I don't know what else to talk about, there's a order because, this is my, Councilor Harvey made, they're there now, like. That whenever you're relating any type of revenues, it needs to be some type of ordinance, for me, some kind of, 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 of. I agree, so this is the matter, but I think also, when you're dealing with person's property. Uh, you have to have something that gives us your party, to be in the business of demolishing property. And so I would like to see an ordinance that says we have that order. If not an ordinance, at least the state law that we can go to, that gives us, because if there is a state law that says you can do it, we could do it. But usually, I have found with the council, is there's a state laws in existence, and this, and a former council has enough of the ordinance. Basically, it says what that state law say. So this is all really, really good, because I don't think cities are, this is a demolishing property. But perhaps some churches, councils, local students, we need to see.
I have, I have, and, 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 and we, just to follow up, now, we're not promising, it's been sound for our toward, but I'm. This is the very reason why I was so upset, that we spent hour after hour after hour worrying about property. This little black mode falling in, we, we can't, we can't even.
I got it, okay, uh, I, I, Miss Phillips.
Uh, just to make sure the council's doing, the town has a property that already been torn down, but we're in the process of changing it. And council, that, and it's only this legally, would you feel that, when they're going on something that's already came out?
First of all, that's, that's a question I'm not interested in, but if you're saying, when I got to stop property being torn down, that's this.
What I'm saying, I'm going to put it in plain terms, a property that's already nailed with the project. And if only there is, for council to go to, hey.
On business?
Yes, there are twenty five, thirty, that was the sign.
And you're saying.
And I think you're aware of it, I think you're aware of, um, of that property. So I was wondering, I've seen it on the list, it's long, but you can possibly be halfway toward it, and they go and vote to. For something, because it's, that's a, right now, council should not be voting on that property, because it's, it's almost there.
Okay, your, your social information is?
It's, oh, first.
I don't even see my, I don't even see Councilor, let me just get some clarity on that. Do twenty five thirteen, that reserve, has that ever been on one of these lists that we've already approved on? That's my question, sorry, has that ever been on the list that we've already approved? My, my, and that already on the list that we've already approved?
Um, I don't think, I can, no, it's not for.
Okay, so that, I can't answer that without, okay. Well, I hope that it's been on the list that we've already approved, because apparently it's already started the process to be demolished. So I'm hoping that it's already demolished, otherwise, if we have it, that it's we got a problem. Go ahead, Councilor.
Well, I received the call, and that's how I know about it, because, uh, a resident, I don't know if they're not, she's regressed at all of her information, she's spoken to him in the past. Uh, but she said that you all voted to tear her property, and I'm trying to get ahead of it, because people, that, I have seen on many of her. Maybe I have overlooked that the possibility is, it's something over, that'd be great. But, uh, I know that she's upset about it, because I was seeing her talk about, and I noticed that the address is on the disk. My thing is, I would be afraid for council to say, yes, you both to tear it down, because I don't have.
Okay, so.
It just here.
So y'all, so that we won't get into that moment, let's wait and get the answer. Whether it's already been on the list before that part, and you already have a circle, you got a question on that part. Or, is how do we create a further record on this matter, that the term is moving to?
Yes, Councilor, please. So I, I just want to, um. Just kind of put it out there. We, the council has asked for an ordinance, my great.
Yes, ma'am.
And some of the documentation, um, to verify state law, or maybe to verify that, um, what we're doing in parade. So. We're asking the attorney to do, do this research. And I'm hoping that we don't get an answer that they didn't need to do all the research. I, I just want to make sure that they're, thank you, Councilor.
Alright, and so that we can move on, it might, go and look at these properties that are listed, on this list, right now, up in your ward. Any research on it, go and look at them, and, uh, any other questions that you can, uh, relate to this, bring them on Tuesday. Yes, sir.
Councilor James, um, that, um, property, now, you were saying, I asked, was this the only one she has seen on this, uh, I can clarify, it's fairly clear.
Yeah, I, that's why I was telling you, I'm, I'm gonna come back, like he said, I know what, I know, I know about these, some of these properties. I know about the one on Gamma, this family have, uh, that's why I was asking, uh, we can, because the family was getting together on Gamma Avenue. Uh, with, uh, we can, that property there, and we want a building, that's why I asked you. Uh, the house on Gamma, Gamma Ave, Avenue is in my ward, and it belongs to the family, the lady that got burned up in the house. It belongs to her, uh, Ms. Rosendale Brown, uh, that, uh, her daughter lives in Pan, and she is over that house, and, and, so. It's over the property.
That is being, Councilor, the address.
The address is, let no six Gamma Avenue.
Okay.
And that's what I'm asking you, or we, we can, you know, and they're gonna come back and build. So that's my reason why I'm asking you, with this family request.
When you said it's in or not in, that's.
It's in, it's in.
And you wonder whether we're tearing it down or what?
I'm asking you, is the, is, is this request of the family, where you guys tear the house down? Are you, are we tearing it down in the, in the whole of the property, and you're charging?
Is the family request of the house?
That's it.
That is, is this ordinance gonna tell us what the process is? I don't, I don't, okay, because I keep you, I ask so and so to tear down the house, or so and so. And it may be a semantics, I just want to make sure. Extremely, it seems, to me, it should be, if you've got a house in your ward that is falling in, you need to ask other enforcement to look at it, see if it needs to be. Does not, at least not go to your back, the only question is, does it need to be, the, all of them, about that, they're, they're, they're. But I do know that, we're talking semantics here, when I say, I would like for Mister, I would like for. One oh three Melon Drive to be torn down because it's getting burned. It should, it's falling in, it's in. It's good to know about this structure. Or so he's definitely having to, they turn to have to have an answer.
Right, so we want to create further confusion again. We need to see the law that gives us the authority to do these things.
I've been in with that.
That's all, it's a common question, what is your authority? And so we need to know who and if we have the authority to do these things.
And, and, and just to clarify, these things may be a structure, have a question, problem.
And yes. And we wasn't a problem on it, and then the attorney doesn't, they don't pay us. Because we know that if there's a situation where there's a, a hazard to public health or anything, we go and do it. We know that we have that law.
Make sure we all understand, the order that was established, they don't have to tear it down, put it in the church. They ask us to, and hey, there's.
Yes, so we want to know, can we do this?
Yes, yes. And then some of us are very uncertain, and like, even if they, and if you.
I think that should be all the process information. All right, so let's move on, y'all. Uh, the next item, now I'm trying, we spent a lot of time, so I'm going to try to, take everybody a little bit. The next thing, the Resilience Two Fifty Three, that's twenty one slash twenty two. The approval of the Alabama, we have the five ranked award agreement between the city of Salem and the Alabama Department of the Department of Maintenance. Ladies and gentlemen, you have that resolution in the attorney's report. In the item number four, in the report, are there any questions that you have for the attorney? Right now, concerning this resolution proposed, resolution R two fifty three, that's twenty one slash twenty two. Are there any questions?
Can I put a reset?
Yes, ma'am. You got any questions?
One question.
Yes, well, for me, just.
Uh, attorney, ask, so if we both, they got, so they, they're gonna fight for the grant, get this recycle start. And it's not followed by the, uh, the, uh. Public Works Department?
Well, I, I heard, I was looking at my face. The, uh.
Plan developer, then I'm saying, is, is it gonna, is she gonna be like we had before? She's there, the recycle bins already set up, already.
Just before there, this is, this is only forty thousand dollars worth of education. The materials, materials, and so, so this is another letter. Or, or a recycling.
And, and, and the reason I hesitated was because I spoke with, uh, the director. So how much of this would be a better point for her? She moved that one, uh, seven, eighty, eighty.
This is a, I got a big shot.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Uh, still, if you have some more to me, if you have any questions on Tuesday that we can, if I hear from you, we'll place on us.
I have a grievance attached to each other.
Okay. If I hear from you, we'll place on us. All right, the next item, item number five, uh, that was resolution R two fifty four. That's twenty one slash twenty two. The approval of award agreement between the city of Salem and the Burn Special Area Police Department. Department of Justice, House, one, award agreement. Ladies and gentlemen, this is item number five in your, uh, attorney's report. And if there are any questions for the attorney concerning the proposed adoption of this resolution.
And the president's, on the presentation, that was a title in the area of residence on my list. Uh, before, I, I was correct. Over the time, uh, for the, for the, or that was just a title, that's a, this was.
Yeah, so it is the resolution R two fifty four, that's the, okay. Same, any questions for the attorney this time? What, what's it called? Is it, was it for?
The, the grants for. The, you know, the police department, the, uh, the, uh.
I see.
Correct.
Why, we did.
Because they, what they say, we just say, well, this is a part, they had, had, wanted to, I think, had. Something, supplementing salaries for the police department. I can't.
Wait, go ahead. Is that second paragraph? I, I, did you say that, sorry. The second paragraph in R two fifty four, that's the second paragraph. Is that a type of? All right, second paragraph.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, R two fifty four, the second paragraph is the exact site that is R two fifty three, you know. I don't think this community wasting is kind of a, a, a.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, we have a site.
Because they were copying this year. They were copying one of their. And it wasn't. Yeah, maybe it was the same thing from R two fifty three, just left it there, it's already disappointed, got it very nice with the fans.
He gave it out.
That was good.
Did you, did you have a, you have a?
We've already approved it, you know, council, on the time, since the last, we already approved it to apply for this, for that, or second. Um, yeah, the mayor called me today, um, and, um. Talked to me about there was some documents that needed to be executed regarding the JAG rent. Uh, that happened to be executed with the county. Uh, and, um, he, uh, asked, um, about that particular issue. He said, he will be sending us some more information related to that in the very, very future. That they're going to take that up soon. But it was something that he mentioned to, we need to have executed, uh, on behalf of the county of Birmingham, Birmingham County with this JAG. And so he's going to be sending us up, hopefully, today or tomorrow, to give us further clarification on that. I told him I did not have a problem with that, and I did tell him, I was going to bring that up at work session to you all tonight. For transparency, so I want to make sure that I can bring that up to concerning the JAG rent. And maybe the attorney may have the information.
I don't know, I know I cannot, sorry, I have some. I was sitting presented with that information earlier today, and the mayor told me, he had a question before. And then people said, you were fooled by, I imagine, where George was very, very.
There's something that has to be executed from the general for this workforce to even start processing. Uh, with the county, and so he was asking to require it out there. And I told him, you know, um, that I did not have a problem with it. But I told him to bring it up to you all and say that he said something. But it shouldn't, this should not be about a warrant. This should be something that we need to work on, and I did want to bring that up, Terry, man, go ahead, council.
Uh, just to note that, some of the, I was, we were, that JAG rent timeline was, was zero for this, I don't know, five minutes. So if that's something, we just need to keep our, I have a, for many, too. Because it's something on the county, but it was zero.
And according to this resolution, it's, uh, the most little batch.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Uh, estimated at one, uh, one percent, now, now, that, in Charleston. Yeah. It is to be covered from the rent batch. Now, you're saying right now, the, the.
But it's zero, it's zero, seventy eight, or the, uh, very, probably, uh, the revenue is the last.
Is that in the JAG section?
I agree. Uh, it's, it's in the revenue, I mean, it's the summer revenue from one thousand nine hundred and seventy eight.
Okay, look in, look in the, on the expense sheet and see if, if they had, if they have the revenue. Look in, look in the JAG section. As an observer, uh, yeah. Okay, it should, it's about the next to the last. Yeah, some of them, you could, you could, the resolution.
And then, so let's see.
I don't know if it is not.
All right, check, all right.
I would, I would say, in previous years, we have always supported the JAG. It had always been out, it always, no match. It always was, but when it came in, the new ministerate was taken out, but we, we always had. Because the county had always been a part of it. So then, it's not that huge a problem.
Okay, with all the questions that we have, and we'll look at answers to. Any other questions related to this item? We'll still answer, we'll, we'll bring that up, uh, on Tuesday, uh, for questions, uh, that the council has. All right, next, uh, and I have another shit, thank you, that, and noise.
Uh, uh, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Will you, will you pick that correctly for us? Before, we, we, with that, with that, R two fifty four. Take it back. Uh, the, uh.
There.
Uh, I mean, I'm probably, uh, considering this, so.
The same paragraph two of the documentation following.
The, the resolution itself, it usually just, it's, it's, referencing those, the side. Yeah, we can't go back to, uh, cops. If that's.
And that portion is a better. Correct with that. To me, I guess, Mr. Attorney, and, um, I know finance is not your thing, but, um, it was good to tell you for it. If you could perhaps, because you have worked with every department, and every night. So I guess, if, if, if we wanted this to be considered revoked on Tuesday. If you could find out the funding source, uh, because right now, we're not seeing, uh, the budget, budget, the three bowling. Yeah, for two fifty four, that one, thirty seven thousand five hundred dollars. Hit for the renting, so find, has that been placed in?
Yes.
The proposed, but if not, we're gonna have. So find out that, um, if, if, where it is, but if you tell us where it is, then we can, we can take this, uh, for a search. Or they're not ready.
The word is spending funds, they have a resolution, it should name.
That is.
I, that's, that's, that's.
Just. If you, if you, you know, Mr. Attorney, just, uh, put that correct, uh, five items in the resolutions. We did it all the time, we put some correct five in the resolutions, so if you could do that. Because right now, as it reads, it just says it's coming from the rent batch, but it doesn't identify where it is. It's coming from the, that, 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 actually, plus the five. So that's what we need. So if you can get that, get that to them for Tuesday, we could perhaps vote for that, uh, vote for that one Tuesday. Because I know that everyone is anxious to get action on that. Oh. All right, so on to your next item, it'll be Carter, three boys. And that was item number six, I think.
That's also written out.
We can have that. On last Friday, you did receive the invoice from another Carter, by emails, everyone should have that now. So they get the complete billing sum, uh, from the. Because remember, last time we chose not to vote, you did have a completed billing summary, summary on the interns, but we have that now. Question, go ahead, council, Terry Thompson.
Well, the letter you sent us, it's a, this was, this was, this is saying, the deal, for the person that you talked with, the, uh, the male.
I'm sorry.
The, the information that you sent us, um. Is this the deal that, um. That the person they were speaking to of, uh, their, his, his.
Is, 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 is all the person's mentioned, that would be talked to, source attorney?
No, you, it was, he asked me, he was, uh, information on this, if it's the, the layout, uh, what discussion the back is field with, was.
I think you asked me, uh, the name.
This is on the.
Oh, you.
This is.
Oh.
This is.
Oh, okay.
You can.
Yeah, right.
Oh, she got a personal.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right. That's why.
Any other questions, anybody else concerned that?
Thank you.
Yeah, no wrong. Any other questions? All right, let's move on, ladies and gentlemen, to the next item, item number seven. And that is the industrial development board, uh, appointments. Uh, and, um, we've got information from, um, industrial development board concerning their proposals, individuals, uh, to circle on this board. Uh, it's item number seven, in your report. Uh, are there any general questions that you have concerning, uh, these appointments? Are there any general questions that you have? These appointments come, where the nation is coming from the there, and the council approves the revenue. That's how they mentioned, you know, that they were, appointed this one. And so as you can see, we must leave these appointments, certainly, because it's time to do some work, just being done. Uh, the, so we need to get those approved. Are there any questions?
I know.
Okay, it's also, just read, it's. All right, if you should get some of this information, make sure.
Yes, sir, all right. This is part of my, 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 my. I'm, 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 we have to, for us, my, my, my. This is about me. I'm all very controlled, I'm, I'm all like that. For this, uh, project, which I'm planning out at two locations, I'm being, planning at two locations. Uh, this one, uh, says, uh, as the tax admitted, uh, documented, clarified that, uh. New information should suffice to present to the council for their consideration, uh, school, uh. So that's how I'm going to stop there. Okay, I'm, I'm giving new information from, uh, first off, like, the, the. That's, uh, my, my, my.
Any questions? All right, all right, now, so let's move on to the rest of the item, I'm under council, our, I have some items that he needs to add. And we'll pick those up, um, after, uh, councilman, uh, time. So let's wait to start, we have some, it's hard to, we take some time.
Okay, and, and that's, we do the budget, and I guess I just, I need to put a citation, that the budget that the mayor sent us, his budget. Are we, do we, we either have to accept that budget as a whole, or deny as a whole? We either accept, or we don't, we can't. I mean, it's all or nothing. I, I, I don't think that's ever, uh, uh, I don't think that's, uh, uh. But the budget is dependent upon, but whatever questions you have about changes or amendments to it, can be submitted. And then, and then you can ask.
And let me just make this statement. The proposed budget that council received from. This council can name. Now, the entire budget, it is, we can, B, vote to not adopt any, any, any budget. Because C, go line up, I can say, you want this, we got that. Uh, or D, come up with a complete budget of our own. So we have all those options for doing this, Mr. Chair. And so I think next to the question is, no, we don't have the role on it, uh, all the neighbor mind, we can choose.
Can I ask, may I, Tuesday, can I make, this is just, maybe this council person, what I would like to do. Is use the mayor's budget, he presented, just go line by line, line by line. So do, if, if that's something that I would like to do, I think it's, it's a motion for, for voting on Tuesday.
No, no, you don't have to, no. When we start, when we hear, we'll go for each line by line anyway, so you don't have to.
And then, I, I, we only caveat out the, whatever you do, the council.
By law, we said it, our, and this, the counties are not required to have a budget. Nothing in the law that says you have to have a budget. But if you do have a budget, it must be that funded out of that. All right, and also furthermore, the council is responsible for about anything related to expenditures of tax payer money. The legislative branch is responsible. All right, that, does that take your, 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 excellent? Let's go, item number two, and three, and four, five, six, both your items, council, ten times.
All right, thank you. Okay, a reason why I'm talking about item, uh. Okay, the reason why I'm talking about item number two. In my budget, you know, we get the seven cents gas. And I've been doing some research on seven cents gas. And my concern, deep concern, is that I need to know from the trade. Do our seven cent gas tank, are she present in our general fund? Because it says that our seven cent gas tank is not. Put in our general fund, used for general purpose. And the reason why I'm asking this is because of the division that we have in our wards. With some of the city ride, any city or any street that we live on. We are not supposed to have rats on the side of the street. If you're driving down Broadway, in your neighborhood. You're supposed to have that, it is for that seven cent gas tank, you should take care of the city. Also, we have a problem with our curbs and gutters. That seven cent gas tank is supposed to use to take care of that. This is why I want to know exactly. Where our seven cent gas tank is. And that's what my quote.
That's the next question.
I want to, what I wanted to share with the council.
Yes, sir.
Because I can hear a problem, but it bothers me when you drive around in the residential, driving down Broadway, driving down. And we can, we can get this money, okay? So my next thing is called. The bill on American bond. And the reason why I asked that is because. In our budget. And this of the long term. And the reason why I asked that. What you said, Mr. President?
As you said, you wrote your next item.
Why? Why talk about that question? Okay, the bill. The bond is missing, the bill in America. And the reason why I asked that, I wonder why it wasn't on there because it has the date of. The second month, first of twenty twenty three is what it's supposed to finish. It's forty eight.
It shows, in the budget, it shows two thousand nine. It showed two thousand, it's been mentioned. It showed two thousand fourteen.
And we don't have the bill in America.
And I know it's a little bit, and one of the things that I'm going to request, and I'm sorry to be jumping in, but while I'm rolling.
Well, go ahead.
Tuesday, I am, as part of the budget process, I am even going to request a complete debt schedule. Now, it is in the back of the audit. It has, it has the debt schedule, it's all along the.
It's in the twenty nineteen part.
Yeah, right, and but it goes out through twenty. I mean, it is all.
I, the reason, I know what you're saying, but we got, we gave us a.
No, it needs to be in.
It needs to be in and it's not in there. And I was trying to figure out why. I want to know why it's in there. Because we only have two, we have two bonds be paid out, like you said, Mr. President, you said one, but we're gonna have two. In the, in the same month of twenty twenty three, that's fair. So that's why I was wondering about that.
So you can sit that on Tuesday, okay?
Okay. Yes, sir. And my next thing, I'm gonna follow, I asked them to. And I know I asked this before, and I have forgotten, but in the statement in the measure for. The answer to my question, and the answer to my question, he did not. He said later, but I know who has. Planning developer, I'm requesting for Henry Thompson from planning developer, because every point we did, I get. Because I'm trying to get our house representative, who does this here person. Over in that area off of Monty Street. In twenty eighteen, we did an eight trip project. That hit a portion of the street. And I want to finish up the rest of that street. And the house representative, the French gentleman, asked me to get a copy of. The eight trip project. So I can try and get the funds to finish up that area. That's what our house representative does. We need areas. So I'm trying to finish that because it needed that, it needed the sidewalk. I get what was true. We got half of the area.
On Tuesday, then that whole list on words.
Okay, and then my next one is the. Autopsy report. And the reason why I keep asking for the autopsy report, it's important to me. I don't know, I like looking at the autopsy report. So when we do the budget. We know where we at, if what situation we are in with our mind, on how, even with our grant money. Either with our projects that we've been doing for the city, are we following the guideline? I just like to have that when we do our budget, that it just say that how we look. And, and you know. I know it's ready, I just want to go, please, can we have that? I'd like to have it doing top of our budget. To follow, to do that, to see where, and we get to deal with our gas tax. Like, the last time they told us that, we spent a lot of money in the city. And you know, you told us something else about our projects that we doing. We can't done by the public work director. And I just want to look at how with the amount that we can do. When we go top of it.
Do you know how the seven cent gas tax is referred to? Is it, is it, because I was just trying to answer your question.
I know how to, is it something selective, we can lay out?
No, no, I mean, is it, is it revealed about gas tax? Is that seven cent or just state gas tax?
I think it's, that's the state gas tax.
There is, there is a separate account.
Yes.
That goes for, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I wanted to ask is, because they said that with some of the issues that we have, the reason why I brought it up. It could be useful to take care of our, they, they, you know, problems in our ward. And they were saying that's what that gas tax font would be used for. So that's why I was asking.
It's the way it was written, as you said, restricted use for restoration, restoration, rid, rid of draining.
How much is that?
Three hundred seventy six thousand six hundred thirty five dollars. That was last business, last business. This was the June third.
Okay, and my last one, I need to get. I know the councils don't remember when we gave everybody the streets that needs to be reserved. You know, we got a lot of money coming out. And planning developer has not can't give by the council to show us a layout of how the structure of the fund that comes out. For restore, restoration of our streets. We gave all the streets that really need to be reserved, but the reason why I'm asking, because the by the council did not know what. They had a meeting where, uh, Hupman, where Mr. Henry gave the information out on the infrastructure. Funds, and I don't want him to give us a report, tell us where we at and what's the layout of, of in our wards. The fund that they're gonna use in that year.
Okay, you just said that, what's. Okay, those are your items. Let's move on, Councilmember Thompson.
Okay, my question was, I just want to, and I can ask this question too. We just need an update on, because the council had voted to add two people to the personnel board. So we want to know how, if that had been put in place. Like I said, I can ask this question to the board, because. It should have been in effect immediately. So a person, a new member should be added as a member. On that board, so just an update on that. And then the personnel manual, who also need an update, because I haven't got council voting. Because I am the administrative chair. For me also get correspondence on what was going on with the first family. I have, I have a big interview, so we need to. See what's going on with that. And I also, I think it is, I have a copy. Of my P O for cutting bread in my awards. And the P O is worth seven thousand dollars, so I would like to counter to those who is wanting to.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Thompson. Uh, because your items, and we can now go to Councilwoman Carmichael with his initial line.
It's not doing too well. Okay, so last being. Or have the votes, or the. Council Johnson, it's an issue. Correct, because, because. The question was answered by Mayor Ross. But I have already started on another, right? Now I have two ones. One for grass runway clearing, cleaning, stoves, or twenty dollar dollars. The, and I really got the.
I was talking about in conference last year, most shows, you know, I asked courses about. People, I don't know what it was. And I wanted to be prepared on white person who is cutting a lot of grass and getting a lot of money. And we use, verify, make sure I heard right, long people with them as separate person. So I wanted to make sure that was right, because I will read it all. So I, yeah, I think that's a big one.
Education. All right, and so one, twenty five dollars for those things, so. The highways, this is around old ward, the bridge, the highway, several things that. I mean, I'm trying to have. All of here, they, they're just. The other one was trees, we have lots of dead trees. We're not getting all the dead trees for the test, but there's one, two, three, four, five, six. Trees on this test, and this includes projects, so I'll call ours, increase the best stuff. So that is, so thirty six to. The other, the other issue that I have. I wanted to bring you about those classes. And this is. Okay, so. Yeah, obviously, this is. This is a, I think you might agree with such question, but these are. I don't know many of them, it's a, a bad report. There's a one, I think, that I have. I don't think we need to continue putting this on this anywhere, especially in our ward, where we've got so much interest. And that's what, we're gonna change that area. And, and. You know, I just want to read this to make sure everybody understands. About the error of this. So, so we have the responsibility over business license. At section sixteen dash twenty nine, for revocation or illegal operations of business. Shouldn't you personally doubt the operating business, private profession, or application of zoning and code of or business or. Vehicle management or in such an address, that will public or help, or so as to continue a nuisance. He, she shall be go to a rest meter. And in addition, the city council shall have a right to approve the license of any such business, private profession. It follows to the procedure, how we should do that. And in that procedure, it says we should offer to hear from the staff, license owner. So, so I think we should treat it like public area, probably. Probably known about the public, based on what I'm reading. And, and I'm talking about, I want you to put that file. And just make sure how we should go about that, and maybe we can get. An answer on Tuesday, so we can, maybe we can take a vote for that. But further, it's, it states that we must do this type of resolution. So we hear a written resolution or voting, this business license. And it's all written right there, page sixteen dash twenty nine. And I just want to read all that. And I don't think you should send it right here, it's not a public safety. I think what everybody, everyone reads, that's our number one. The only here, and so we need to make sure that. Don't. And let's see. I missed a gap of eighty minutes. I just wanted to. I got, I got the whole ticket down. And let's see. I haven't, I haven't mentioned this too, but I have those items we should get on replay. And we haven't got that. What I would like to get maybe is a show of the council or someone to contact. The, the Auburn group and request that. So we can get that digital for that, so we can all make sure you have, have a look at it. But, but I just can't figure it out. I would like to start working on numbers.
I can do it, I can.
And that'd be very, I'm asking for. All right, well, but, problems solved, solutions.
All right, next one, next one. All right, again, for my items, there's a special age for going around for RIV, we think it's vulnerable. Y'all know, we donate to this, a member of this school for the councilman in the under. If you ever figure it out, please go out, we'll take a vote on that. It's finished on Tuesday. And then the next item I have is the update. Y'all remember when we had citizens concerned? And it was the young lady concerned, you know, the very one.
Yeah.
And so do we have any updates on that, Mr. Chairman?
As I did, we did one, I got a receipt, but it doesn't, that doesn't. Both.
Uh, oh, I didn't comment on that other time. And I get that cemetery. Come to, for, uh, and they were, and the location that they were, they were. Free to. I'll send them up. Uh, general, resign, uh, I'm waiting for that, for that guy.
Okay, so what's that?
This is my, yeah, what?
So was that because that they didn't have a resolution, council?
No, it's already a job.
Also, now that that technique I got.
And I said, I said, I said, I put that entry style to, uh, one of the challenges that they, you get a reading on. Uh, that way you can have it and the information I got about us, that's different and that's exactly what we're doing.
Can you just let us know whatever that's about? Since she didn't come before the council, I would like to sit there and talk to the brother casters. She didn't have a difference, but they, and what they thought that they have there. Very, uh, lovely to hear that. Um, and then the next item I have, seven quarters for appointment. Uh, we have an appointment that's ending, uh, obviously eleventh, uh, next week. Uh, I have the Johnson's term on the board. He ends, uh, next week. Uh, so on Tuesday, uh, let's come there to vote to put this up in the bottom of that one. And so, uh, we'll take it for the four, whatever, smart and big motions, whatever. We'll take that on Tuesday, uh, religion. Uh, so keep that in mind. Uh, that's coming up soon.
And can I say something, Miss President?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you please give me an update of all, you know, all of everybody's terms for on that board?
Okay, uh.
Give me an update this whole time.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll get that, but I'll send you for the purposes of this spot. I'll send you a copy of this for these guys to let you know the circumstances.
Well, I, I had one to hold with, because I had put some new people on, or in the last, um.
You are the all.
Yes, you know, you need to know all. And that's actually been a long time, I'm careful.
That's okay, that's correct. But let us know. We can still, uh, listen, but we know what's up. We send you the information concerning these news. I, I, I get it.
What you said about the date of the update on it before?
Say what now?
What date you say?
Obviously eleven, obviously.
Next week.
Okay, so we need to vote on that, on that particular side.
And we need to hopefully to, uh, a puppet person to have, uh, twenty-two, which.
Whatever the council says.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Uh, then moving on, uh, the next item is putting on, uh, the city, I think we talked about that some time. So we go for that again. As Mario knows, we need to have that information so we can know what we're doing. We need to know how much we owe so we can know how much we can save. Paying for that, that's, you know, man, it's, uh, pay. You need to know how much you owe before you go out feeling. Don't write checks and take cash. We heard that before. So let us know how much we owe, okay? So we're ready to, with, again, uh, then also, looking about the next. The mayor also reached out to me, uh, regarding, uh, the national, and, uh, this council, uh, that has been going into the expenditure. Uh, I think nine thousand something dollars, whatever.
Eight thousand.
Was eight, okay. Uh, for the national, uh, and we voted to use the merit of risk when that funds to. Now, uh, the moment to my attention of that, because, um, we also passed resolutions several weeks, months ago. They're saying when we make expenditure recovery on their risk plan, uh, what are we supposed to do? Forward, or we're supposed to give the agreement? Both the executive branch and the less favoritism have to agree to. And so now, very valid point, I'm letting them off that to my attention. And, uh, that's what I was feeling to take care of my today. Uh, and I'm appreciative of that because it's much needed before I go. I just would ask my fellow councilmen that in the future, when we get ready to, uh, make it, see what's coming from a better risk plan. Let's just remember that resolution that you give on, uh, that says upon the pitch. Let's remember that. But then I looked at it too from another angle. It says agreements of both the executive and the less favorable. What we voted on last time you made was our agreement. We agreed as a council to use merit of risk in playing for. So basically, the mayor had the option of the resolution to either agree with us or to not agree with us. But, uh, and so that's how I can look at that place too. But I just think they're not just starting, whatever, let's communicate a little bit of on that and reduce the merit of risk in playing for. I think it can go, uh, it will, uh, but he did, like, he had the option to agree about it. Uh, so it really wasn't a broken, I think, just, you know, if you do agree on that. And I have not formally responded to him, uh, because he reminded me in that that I don't do that reviews. And he's in his career, uh, but I want to bring this before the council. And now I will respond to him, right? To let you know that I need to bring this to the council's attention. Uh, and, uh, that's what I plan on doing. Councilwoman Thomas, and then every other time.
Yeah, I just want to say is, uh, this body comes to the council meeting, we let the public know, uh, sometimes, you know, we have a chance to sit there, we know it's hard to see that we have to, uh, do the emotional, be in our life or work session. And he knows what a revolution that we have put in place and, uh, and he brought these, uh, and I'm quite sure, uh, the mayor watched the meeting and, uh, when we brought before the work session, which, uh, we discussed not only this time, we had, I brought, brought it before, uh, previewed before the date, before we did say, come up with it. And, uh, we were supposed to have a public safety meeting, lacking to be here to address it. So everybody can know what, what our plans for. So I say like this here, when we work together, it provides an insight. And, uh, we can do more together. So we, we, we wanted to do this because it follows up on, this is some of the things that the attorney general is saying that we need to do without skill, without cover. Our police officer, our first responding, the R people in, involved. So I think that, uh, I think everybody at the city, uh, most this way happened. And, uh, mayor, uh, we did, uh, bring it up, and I think we had the president, uh, to, to invite him, and he, you know, and he, I think someone would have disagreed and told us that, uh, that, uh, we had a resolution and then tonight to agree with us at this time.
Well, for me, like I said, I, I forgot the resolution and I remember I would have all taken it. But I didn't remember, you know, human needs.
Yes.
Human needs, we all have needs. So let's, in the future, with the council, this is, yeah. Where are you, Councilwoman Thomas?
Um, also the end of it, we did hire, uh, and if I, that's the deal. So that, that's included too. That's what the council, the council also need to have his opinion on whether we need to spend on.
Absolute opinion.
They also promote anything, not just the council, but it also goes for the, they the right to play.
And it's so, yeah.
And, and we asked for him to come, the president, we asked for him to come, uh, speed up.
Okay, well, let's do the, can I, can I, can I, because that's true.
Yep.
We hired ourselves with you, so absolutely correct. Uh, but we did there. Anything else? Any, uh, committee, go ahead, uh, after this, uh, this, uh, I got a, you know, uh, working on the board, okay, so, all right.
Can you carry it up?
And you give me two.
I can give you two, or not? Can you, can you just say?
Okay, shoot me two.
Okay.
So we can hold, you know.
Stand with R S G, okay, so trees and stuff put in the school, and it's coming out of this description.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you, Councilwoman.
I do have a comment coming from the administration.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, even though we did not, we have not did in a couple of months. Um, on this, this pay plan and all of what a pay plan that, uh, the council voted to have, not the administrative committee, the council. Actually, they voted to have that done. I want to clarify that administrative committee does not make recommendations from the overall pay plan. That comes from the entire body of your other accounts. So we need to be mindful when we put false information out. The administrative committee is not responsible for our paperwork, okay? I need to put that in, and I'm going to say that tonight, so that it will be all right. That we are not responsible, but the entire body is responsible for what I employ somebody and what we decide on them too, man, and the job script, okay?
That's true.
We ain't never done that. It was promised me that I am the holder.
Hold on, wait, please. Come on, yeah.
Rich. Mayor's speaking.
Somebody, like, why?
Charles.
I would, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the financial policies and procedures. And, uh, we said that, I think we did on file.
I mean, I have not seen much file.
Okay. I will, uh, I'll be checking, all right.
Right, here's committee. All right, representative of the committee, August fifteenth.
Me, so, yeah, me.
You have public works, I mean, public, no, it's good. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All of that, so that's, that's. You don't have a need for August eight?
Yes.
Is your question? Four, four.
And then, uh, how?
Those are the slides.
Yes, and then I want to make sure it's about three, two, uh, about, uh, uh, do we? It's a public, this is every, do we put this on the bill board and that? But, yeah, we don't have a bill board. Oh, we got six of them, a bill board, huh? There's a six of them, a bill board on that. No, no, don't have a door. What's wrong with doors? Oh, 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 we brought this up. Now you want to put it on the door? Yes, ma'am. All right, okay, today, you want to put, get me out there on my, yeah, okay, thank you. Well, and the reason why I asked you that because I want to make sure, because I know somebody is saying something. So I'm hoping to take, uh, we have a public bill, we just owe two public. And, uh, they said, who said, if you have, if they owe two public, we can have it up in, on the, uh, in one, maybe one of you.
That has to be posted.
Yes, and also, she already listed it out, so she can say.
But that's a part of the, the.
It has to be posted, listed out. I just want to make sure that we, so we need to take that.
All right, the other thing to report this time. Here ain't no further business, uh, so the council, this work session stands, no words, no words. Basically, no words. All very nice.